At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. If you plan to speak during public comments, at the public comments period at the end of the meeting, please fill out a form on the table near the door you came in and give it to the city clerk. At this time, we do ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I welcome Pastor Greg Morris of Parkway Church of God forward to provide the city invocation. Pastor Morris?
Thank you so much again, Mayor, City President, Vice President, Council members, for this opportunity to represent the people of faith and bring the invocation for our meeting this evening. Our great heavenly Father, we come to you out of a place of awe and wonder. We're amazed at the generosity of your grace and mercy. We come to you recognizing in full view that we have fallen short of all that you have desired and intended. There is a war that rages. It's not a conflict of budgets and projects and activities. It's a war that pits good against evil. And though we would prefer that that conflict would be fought somewhere else, we don't pick the times and the places, the battlefield has come close to our homes. While we become glued to agendas and activities, we would pray, oh God, that you would help us to never forget the priorities that are yours. Don't let us become cowards and traitors to the things of God while we acquiesce to lesser things. We ask God that you would help us to be strengthened with resolve and resilience as we do the things that you have called and asked of us. There are those who would have us believe that the myth of our autonomy is real, but saying faith doesn't matter, but we know that happy marriages and well-ordered families and prosperous cities are a byproduct of faithful people who understand biblical principle, virtue, ethic, and morality. So we ask, oh God, bring a revival of godliness and goodness. And we ask that you would guide these proceedings tonight in the work for the days to come for our city with your favor, causing all good things to flourish and evil things to flounder. We ask your blessings upon the mayor of our city, upon this city council and the council members. Bless those that work in the administrative offices and bring protection to the first responders, the police officers, and the firefighters. We are a city that has an overabundance of talent and skill and intelligence. May these attributes thrive and continue to bless all of us as we strive to make this corner of our world a better place where people, according to Paul's scriptural admonitions in 2 Corinthians 5 and 15, can experience a far better life than they could on their own. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, Savior of the world, soon coming King. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen, and thank you Pastor Morris. If anyone is interested in providing the invocation for a city council meeting, please contact the clerk's office at 410-548-3140. At this time, we invite our mayor Randolph J. Taylor to the podium for a few presentations.
All right, I'd like to invite members of the Truth Committee that would like to come up. Whereas in February 1926, noted author, historian, and father of Black History Carter Woodson introduced Negro History Week, the precursor to Black History Month in order to highlight significant contributions African-Americans had made toward the development of civilization. And whereas Black History Month observed each February celebrates the achievements of African-Americans in the arts, civil rights, education, entertainment, government, history, law, literature, medicine, military, music, politics, science, sports, and other endeavors. And whereas Black History Month is designed to recognize and pay tribute to the many contributions of African-Americans to the history, society, and culture of the United States of America by emphasizing Black History Month and its cultural contributions to American life. And whereas the theme for this year's is African-Americans and the Arts, which serves to preserve important issues, figures, and stories in African-American history throughout visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, history, architecture, and culinary. And whereas it is important to acknowledge African-Americans who were the first in their fields, 1908 World Heavyweight Boxing Champion Jack Johnson, 1854 attorney John Mercer Langston, 1967 United States Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall, 1870 United States Senator Hiram Rhodes Rebels, 1968 U.S. Congresswoman Shirley Chisholm, 1940 Academy Award winner Hattie McDaniel, 1947 Major League Baseball player Jackie Robinson, and 2008 United States President Barack Obama. And whereas the city of Salisbury continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our society and way of life, now therefore, I Randolph J. Taylor, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim the month of February 22, 2024 as Black History Month in our city and encourage all citizens to join as we proudly honor the history and contributions of African-Americans.
Thank you, and I want to thank the members of the Truth Committee for coming out and of course for your commitment to our community.
Okay. Let's untie my shoes somehow. All right, I have an award for Jocelyn Lavanne. Is she here? In recognition, to her recognition, her outstanding participation, which led to her win the Amazing Shake competition at Prince Street Elementary School. The competition introduces students to the business world by reinforcing and testing their skills in manners, discipline, respect, and professional conduct. The students are taught various skills and then tested on those skills. The competition is set up to give students the tools to present themselves in a favorable manner, not only today, but future as they embark on professions outside school. Congratulations on the job well done. We can't wait to see what you do with your winning skills in the future. And witness where I have hereon set my hand to the seal of city of Salisbury, the 12th day of February 2024.
I want to just to point a personal privilege, myself and Councilwoman DeShiel had the pleasure to meet Jocelyn at the actual competition last month, and she definitely was a shining star and would definitely, so out of the entire school of Prince Street, she was the winner, and she wowed the superintendent of schools, Dr. Micah Stoffler. So I think we owe her a huge round of applause. And Jocelyn, I look forward to you in 10, 20, 30 years, to you filling one of these seats, or to you becoming one of our mayor of Salisbury, because you definitely have it in you.
It was a pleasure to meet you and to just have dialogue with you. You outshone everyone else because you are such a wonderful example for all of your classmates, and I'm just so proud of you because I spent 22 years of my life at Prince Street. So congratulations again, sweetie. We really are thankful.
Are her parents here? And the principal?
Yes.
I do see.
Yes.
Could you please stand so that she could be recognized?
Yes.
Because it does take the parents, and it also takes the village, to get our kids to where they need to be. So I didn't go, but I do know some of, I think I know her mother. I do think, yes. Huh? She's the mom?
Yes.
Well, I'm, okay, okay. Well, I'm pretty sure I know you. I think, yes, I do. And congratulations, and as Councilwoman DeShields and DeShaun has said, I'm so proud of you. I didn't get to see it, but from their speakings of you and learnings of you, you know, some young lady continued.
Yes, so thank you again. And to the school administration, let us know how we at the city of Salisbury can be of help, and we love to make sure that we are very involved in your community. So thank you all again for putting on that program. So we appreciate you all.
Mr. Miller's always doing something. You are the perfect role model.
Yes. All right, at this time, could I have a motion to adopt the legislative agenda?
Sub move.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sub move. Second.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
On the consent agenda, we have January 8, 2024, closed session minutes. January 12, special meeting minutes. This January 16, work session minutes and special meeting minutes, and the January 22nd council meeting minutes. We have three committee appointments and one reappointment, all with terms ending January 2027. They are Resolution Number 3324 approving the appointment of Catherine Skeeter to the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Resolution Number 3325 approving the reappointment of Dave Harris to the Zoom Commission. Resolution Number 3326 approving the appointment of Michaela Summers to the Youth Development Advisory Committee. And Resolution Number 3327 approving the appointment of Nanay Paul to the Street Committee.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Do we have a Catherine Skeeter, Dave Harris, Michaela Summers, or Nanay Paul, either in person or on Zoom?
No.
No? Well, we appreciate your commitment, your service to the city of Salisbury, and we can't wait to see the work that you'll do to help further our city. Could I have a motion to approve the award of bids?
Sub move. Second.
Ms. Miller, hello?
Buddy. Okay. All right, so we have several items on the award of bid agenda this evening. I haven't seen you all in a while. So the Department of Procurement is here to seek award of bid approval from city council for the solicitations that I'll cover with you this evening. City council required reading practices as defined by the Salisbury Charter and the Municipal Code of Ordinances, and publicly posted the solicitations for the competitively bid procurements on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. So the first item this evening is invitation to bid number 24-14, rebid for the parking garage structural rehabilitation phase two. This was for the Department of Infrastructure and Development. The sole work here is to repair a variety of structural and nonstructural elements and replacement of- Waterproofing elements at the city of Salisbury parking garage. The bid date was December 8th of-
One second.
Yep.
Thank you. There we are.
Okay. The bid date was December 8th of 2023. The bid opening was January 26th of 2024. We did get a total of nine responsive and responsible bids. The vendor to be awarded is contracting specialists out of College Park, Maryland, for a total cost of $794,773. Funding is available in the accounts noted in your packet. That first account is for the $97,500 is an account called Garage Roof Membrane from FY18. I did want to give you some additional information here on that. That was approved via ordinance 2423 in the FY18 Budget Ordinance Schedule B. The second account noted in your packet is Parking Garage Repairs. That was approved under ordinance 2482 from the FY19 Budget Ordinance Schedule B. And then the last item was from the Parking Garage Structural Repairs, ordinance 235, I have 2359 here. Okay. Any questions on that?
Yes, I think we have a question or two.
From what I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Miller, on this, the initial, what I had read, the initial issue with the last, I guess, inspection of the garage, it was a safety issue, and it was recommended that this garage be worked on in 2020. That's my first question, why that wasn't done, if it's a safety issue. My second question is if this is an additional cost over the original $592, shouldn't that have come before the city council for this new estimate of $794,733? And my third question, or third part, is why would be putting this kind of money into something that on the timeline is scheduled for demolition sooner than later? So three parts.
Three parts, and I'm probably not going to be the one to answer any one of those parts for you. Andy has some things he can answer. I believe the Director of Infrastructure and Development is here, and he can answer some of those things, too. Andy, which would you like to address first?
I'll start on all three of them. Yeah, so let's go in reverse order. The document that you're referring to is the CIP Capital Improvement Plan from last year. That included a replacement of the Circle parking garage in FY28. You will not see that in the CIP in this coming year. That has been pushed out several years, so that is not the same timeline replacement. This work that we are doing is preventative maintenance to allow us to continue to gain additional life out of the existing parking garage. So this investment of $800,000 is needed now, but we do not have a immediate timeframe to replace that parking garage. The second one is FY20, question about safety. With a lot of our projects, they have been backlogged. We have been working on trying to get out from underneath. We've had a shortage in engineering staff and resources available to us to move things forward. We're finally catching up in some areas, and this is one of those, making it a higher priority. There was an incident at Title Health not too long ago that really helped made us evaluate the condition of our parking garage and move these to the forefront. So a little bit behind on schedule, but now we're starting to move forward on that. And then the final question is more of a budget question. I think the $794 is a totality of phase two, so it's three different buckets. I believe one is the $592, and then there's two other projects that will wrap it into phase two. So it's not an increase, but more of just being presented as one sum that are all part of the same phase. Still the same different buckets, one's a membrane, one's a structural repair, and then-
One's just garage repairs.
One's just garage repairs, yep. Hopefully I did okay, but any follow-up?
Just one other thing with that. On the time, in the timeline, when, if you're saying that it's not in the near future that you're going to be tearing down this garage and replacing it, do you have an idea of when that would go on the schedule to demolish and replace?
I am, 15 would be great. I would say we should probably be looking at 10 to 15. What happens every now and then, we will bring, and maybe this is where I will hand it off to Rick, but we bring in structural engineers or analysis that'll come do a walkthrough of the garage just to see if there's any additional preventive maintenance that we can do to continue to get additional life out of it. We have no indication that we have an immediate issue right now. That's why we're pushing it out from our, you know, but, Rick, am I missing anything on that?
No, sir. While I'm at it.
Just in case.
From here, more?
It's for the people in PAC 14, we're sad.
Thank you. No, Andy, I don't think you have missed anything. This has been ongoing for quite some years. As Andy had mentioned, there have been multiple assessments done by firms that specialize in parking decks. It's typical that a parking deck, when designed and built, would have a projected useful life of approximately 25 years. Our parking deck over here on Circle Avenue was built in two phases. So these various years of funding is in response to the studies received. Ms. Miller could probably tell you the number of times that we have bid, far, far many more times than the numbers of opportunities we've been able to award based on bids not coming in or the scope not coming in within the funding that we had available. We're quite pleased that with this round, we'll be able to complete the final phase two, as Andy has said, complete all recommended repairs, extending the useful life significantly. So, and we were really pleased with how the bids came in this time. We were not expecting to be able to retire all of the current needs, but this will get it done.
Are there any other questions about that?
Any other questions?
None.
I know that my question was answered in Councilwoman DeShields' line of questioning. Thank you.
Very good. I'll continue. The next item this evening is invitation to bid number A, 24-105. That's the Ambulance and Fire Apparatus Maintenance and Repair Services for the Salisbury Fire Department. This is the Preventive Maintenance and Repair Services to city-owned fire apparatus, ambulances, and other fire department special service response vehicles. The bids were published on October 18, 2023. Bids were opened November 17, 2023. We got one responsive and responsible bid from Atlantic Emergency Solutions here in Salisbury, Maryland. We estimate about $250,000 per year that's budgeted for annual maintenance and repair of the fire department vehicles and apparatus, special apparatus, special vehicles. This is in what we call an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract. It includes a renewal clause. This means that the vendor isn't guaranteed a certain amount of work. It's when something breaks down or it needs a DOT inspection or something of the like.
Two very short questions. Is it typical to only receive one bid for something regarding this nature?
Yes.
Okay, and then second, can you, I'm not sure formally you, but the closed date, like when you close the bids? I see that the bid date, the opening, but none of them have the closed dates for them. Do you typically report on that when you close the bids?
So it's, explain that, yeah.
Yeah, so what I have in here is bid date is when we publish it.
Sure.
Bid opening is when we physically open them, but they're closed to everybody else.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
So semantics.
I was gonna say, thank you.
Yep. Okay, should I go on?
Please.
Okay. The next item is invitation to bid number 24-107. This is a rebid for the wastewater treatment plant materials building renovations. This is for the Department of Infrastructure and Development. It provides all labor, equipment, materials, and incidentals to construct building additions for storage and security personnel at the wastewater treatment plant. The, I was gonna try and use the right words. Bids were well published, August 23, 2023. We opened them and closed them on September 23, 2023. We had three responsive and responsible bids. In all of these, I do put the bid tabulations in your packets. The vendor we would like to award here, which is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, is Delmarva Veteran Builders from Salisbury, Maryland, at a cost of $249,043 from the account noted in your packet. And this award is dependent on your approval of the noted ordinance. I believe it's still on the schedule for this evening as second reading.
Any questions?
Okay. The next item is invitation to bid number 24-113. This is the first of two Truitt Street Community Center bids. This is for the HVAC installation. This provides all labor, equipment, materials, and incidentals for furnishing and installing an HVAC system at the Truitt Street Community Center Annex Building. We published bids on November 15 and opened them on December 15. We got one responsive and responsible bid. That's from Grassfield Construction in Bethesda, Maryland, total of $148,880, and coming out of the account noted in your packet.
Any questions? No question for me, just a comment. I'm excited to see that we are moving forward with this project, so thank you.
Yeah. And the next item, very needed as well, invitation to bid number 24-112, also for Truitt Street. This is the electrical installation. This provides all labor, equipment, materials, and incidentals for furnishing and installing electric system and electrical system at Truitt Street Community Center Annex Building. Here again, we put bids out on November 15, opened them on December 15. We had one responsive and responsible bid here. Here, we'd like to award again to Grassfield Construction in the amount of $142,000, and coming out of the GL accounts noted in your packet. We did have two bidders for this, but the low bidder was considered non-responsive.
Any questions, comments from council?
The next item is request for proposal A-24-102. That's engineering services. I do have the Department of Infrastructure and Development here, but these are really citywide contracts that our other departments can utilize as well. It's architectural and engineering services to include structural, geotechnical, environmental, and electrical services. Proposals were posted publicly on October 25 and opened November 29. We had a total of 21 proposals, which is really an incredible response. The evaluation team had a lot of work to do. As you can see in your packet, they were looking for four main areas where they would award contracts. These are like on-call contracts, so that when we have a structural engineering need, a geotechnical engineering need, the city can, you know, more quickly get to those services. Hence why we put this out. So we're looking to award to all of the firms noted in your packet. In general, these tasks that we give these vendors are really intended for smaller projects, under $100,000, something that's really considered for immediate need very quickly. Depends on what GL account we use, really depends on the department that it comes from, so I can't list everyone here in the packet. These also are what we call indefinite delivery. These also are what we call indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contracts. They're based on task orders that we give each vendor.
Any questions from council? No question but a comment. I could speak to many of the firms listed here, and they're good people to work with. So I'm glad that, I'm glad to see a lot of these familiar names on this, on this list here for the work that they provide.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, the next item is request for proposal number 23-103. This is the laboratory information management system. This is just a change order. So you'll note that this original bid date was way back in 2020. It originally went to award back in March of 2020. The original contract value was $149,472. Current contract value is $197,075.80. Right now, this is the approval of a tier six change order. It's a little odd, because there's really no dollar amount associated with this. It just happened to be that because the original contract value was so much, and additional change orders took it over that 20% threshold that we specified. I'm bringing it back to council anyway. They're just looking to reallocate some funds.
Questions from council? No? Question, comments? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Poucher?
All right, can I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2853 for second reading?
Still moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2853 is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2024 general fund budget to appropriate funds to Salisbury Fire Department's operating account. This is before you for second reading, no changes or amendments.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2852 for, for, I'm sorry.
2853 for second reading.
For second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All those in favor of ordinance number 2852 for first reading, please. I'm sorry, yes, there was a, there's a typo in my, in my sheet. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2854 for second reading?
Still moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2854, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing a budget amendment and the mayor to appropriate funds for the WWTP material warehouse project. This is before you for second reading, no changes or amendments.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2854 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2855 for first reading?
Still moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2855, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing a budget amendment to reallocate $149,000 from the Main Street Master Plan Project to serve as a local match to the Transportation Alternative Program Salisbury Citywide Bike Ways Design Project. Whereas the Maryland Department of Transportation, referred to as MDOT, administers a Transportation Alternatives Program, referred to as CAP, for providing grant funds to support and expedite projects improving trailways for people walking and biking in the state of Maryland. And whereas MDOT and the city have been working together to improve walking and biking facilities in the city as part of the city's Vision Zero Program and the state's Zero Deaths Program in order to end traffic fatalities and serious injuries. And whereas the city was awarded and previously accepted a TAP grant specifically for the design of 15 new bike ways, including pedestrian improvements on city streets. And whereas MDOT has awarded the TAP grant and the total amount of $597,024 to provide for the project, which is to be accompanied by a city match of $149,256 for a total project not to exceed $746,280. And whereas the City of Salisbury determined $149,000 is no longer required for the Main Street Master Plan Project and is available to transfer to the Bicycle Master Plan Project. And whereas the appropriation necessary to execute this appropriation of $149,000 as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of council. Section one of ordinance 2855 reads, "The City of Salisbury's general capital project fund budget, B, and hereby is amended as follows. Decreased revenue for project description, Main Street Master Plan, account description, debt proceeds, account number 9801946931248022, and the amount of $149,000. Decreased expense for project description, Main Street Master Plan, account description, construction, account number 9811951302648022, by the same amount, $149,000. Increased revenue for the Bicycle Master Plan, account description, debt proceeds, account number 9801946931248046, by $149,000. And increased expense for the Bicycle Master Plan, account description, construction, account number 9811951302648046, by that same amount, which is again, $149,000."
All those in favor of ordinance number 2855 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2856 for first reading?
Still moved. Second. Does the chair have a second?
Ordinance number 2856, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving the mayor to enter into a contract with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $1,500 and to appropriate, or to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the Salisbury BiComico Integrated First Care Team, referred to as SWIFT. Whereas the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore has a mini-grant program, and whereas the purpose of the grant program is to benefit organizations that serve health and human services, education, arts and culture, community development, environment, and historical preservation. And whereas the city has submitted a grant application to CFEES for funding to support the SWIFT team. And whereas CFEES has awarded the city funds in the amount of $1,500, and whereas the city must enter into a grant agreement with CFEES defining how these funds must be expended. And whereas all funds shall be used to provide medical transportation for SWIFT patients who are otherwise unable to attend necessary medical appointments and meetings. And whereas section seven dash 29 of the city charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of the grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council. Section one of ordinance 2856 reads, "Mayor Randolph J. Taylor is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore, referred to as CFEES, on behalf of the city, for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $1,500." Section two, "The City of Salisbury's grant fund budget, B, and hereby is amended as follows. A, increased CFEES revenue account number 10500426100-XXXX by $1,500. And B, increased the SWIFT operating expense account number 10500-546006-XXXX by that same amount, which is again, $1,500."
All those in favor of ordinance number 2856 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Could I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2857 for first reading?
Still moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2857, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend chapter 15.24 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Housing Standards to clarify fire and life safety provisions regarding the fire marshal and the code. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of the Salisbury City Code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendment. And whereas the city has adopted a fire prevention code, which is codified in chapter 8.11 of the city code. And whereas the city has appointed a fire marshal to enforce the fire prevention code. And whereas the city has determined that chapter 15.24 of the city code governing housing standards and referred to as the city's property maintenance code must be amended to clarify the role that the city's fire marshal has for enforcing fire and life safety requirements with respect to the city's property maintenance code and to eliminate any conflicts between the property maintenance code and the fire prevention code. Section one of ordinance 2851 reads as follows. Chapter 15.24.020 of the city code, B, and hereby is amended by adding the bolded and underlined language. So the language being added to this particular chapter, which is again, 15.24.020, is found in subsection, new subsection A and 1, A1, which I will read. "The fire marshal or the fire marshal's authorized representative shall enforce all fire and life safety provisions of this code, except in one and two family dwellings. Where reference to fire or life safety provisions of this code indicate the term, quote, 'housing' or 'code official,' end quote, they shall be construed to refer to the fire marshal or the fire marshal's authorized representative. And any conflict of opinion concerning fire or life safety of premises, structures, equipment, and facilities, the decision of the fire marshal shall supersede. In all other matters relating to premises, structures, equipment, and facilities, the decision of the housing official shall supersede. The fire marshal shall be responsible for the final technical interpretation of all fire and life safety provisions within this code. Section one will be also added, and that reads as follows. The fire marshal is authorized to enforce fire sprinkler regulations in one and two family dwellings."
All those in favor of ordinance number 2857 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Move forward with the public comments section of the meeting. I'd like to call Mr. Robert Taylor to the podium. And we do remind those who are making public comments to state your name and address for the record.
As you know, I sent you all an email about the item on the award of bids for the rehab work at the existing parking structure. That's one of the reasons I came. Came to see a discussion of it, and it seemed like a Kabuki Theater broke out. Oh, yeah, we're just gonna take that $30 million item that's in this year's CIP to replace the existing parking garage. We'll just push that off into the future further. It's already pushed off to FY 28 in the existing CIP. Now, in addition to the issues about where the money's coming from, and I heard what the ladies said, I I looked and tried to find out in prior CIPs, the only thing I could find was $592,000 that was appropriated four years ago. But there may be other money, I don't know. It's very hard to read through the city's documents and make much sense out of them. As I say, you've got $30 million here, 28, well, that's just gonna go down the road, maybe 32, 35, who knows? Now, the interesting thing about that is, though, this parking garage is about, what, 703 parking spaces, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong. Yes, 703. And part of the sale of the existing parking lots was, well, they can park, we have extra room in that 703 space parking garage, so they can park there. Now, all the lots have been sold, with the exception, there's a small lot up on Route 50 on the north side of the downtown plaza. And that's about it on this side of the river. Now, if that parking garage is torn down to be replaced, where are those people gonna park? I mean, if anything, we shot ourselves in the foot by selling the lots where they might park while that structure's being replaced, and now those are gone. So if anything, it would make sense to go ahead and do that replacement now and hopefully strike a deal with one or more of those developers that have bought those lots to use them for a year or so, however long it might take, to replace it. It's fairly simple construction. It's not much, very little habitable space, it's just open, open space. So anyway, that's my first comment. In other words, this kind of epitomizes the ridiculous way in which the city has been managed in recent years, if anything. Now, that was one reason I came. The other reason, I just wanted to try to be very quick. I'm reading from, it's chapter, pardon me, section 325010. You don't have to write it down, I'll give a copy to Kim when I leave. That's the legislation that established the Horizon Program, and I'm reading from subpart F of that section. It said, "The program shall be reevaluated prior to the end of the third year." Now, the program was adopted three years ago in June. So that means in about three or four months, five months max, it's supposed to be, it says "shall," be reevaluated. It also goes on to say, "The city council may approve modifications to the Horizon Program and suspend or terminate the continuance of the Horizon Program at any time by resolution." So it's time to act on this. It's time to do something about the Horizon Program to bring it under control, if not totally rescind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Dean?
Jeff Dean, Middle Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland.
Thank you.
I am coming with my twice monthly update on recovery housing. I have been mentioning over the last couple of months, an article in the Baltimore Sun referencing a lawsuit brought by homeowners in Hartford County against Hartford County for Mrs. owning a sober living home there. And so I wanted to quickly read the first paragraph. This is from April 8th, 2021. "Hartford County's former planning and zoning director made a mistake when he determined that five houses serving as sober living facilities could be built in a residential neighborhood south of Bel Air. Without a special exception, a county zoning hearing examiner determined recently as of 2021." It's a long, very exhaustive article. I brought a copy for everyone. I have never had success emailing council and mayor here, so I brought hard copies. I brought two letters to the editor referencing updates on that regard, and I brought some material from inside sober living, the the industry itself, and I thought there were some interesting highlights. So this is, this is an article called "What Maryland Does Not Want You to Know About Opening a Sober Living Home." And highlight, so this is industry information, industry guidance for would-be operators of sober living homes in Maryland. This operation offers services such as market analysis and competition analysis. Begins with, "If you're considering Maryland as your target location for your sober living home business, you're in luck. The state makes it remarkably easy to open and operate sober living homes. In many cases, you do not even need to apply for certification at all." In big, bold letters, it says, "You don't need to get certified or licensed to open a sober living home in Maryland." It gives three, three items where one would have to theoretically certify or, well, certify, which is basically if you're accepting state funds through grants, if you hold yourself out as a certified recovery residence, or if you tell investors that you are a certified recovery residence. If you do not do those three things, the state of Maryland does not require you to certify as a sober living home. The sober living homes that have been causing our ire on Middle Boulevard have held themselves out as certified recovery homes. To my knowledge, they were not. And it says basically, if you don't do these things, then you can completely ignore the certification process. The reason I bring this up is because the argument has been that the state of Maryland is the, is the entity that's overseeing sober living homes. With very few exceptions, that is not the case. I have been asking since July 4th, well, I came on August 7th, this has been going on since July 4th, for some kind of process to be made to certify recovery homes. I haven't heard an update in months. Mr. Kitchrow- Mr. Kitchrow offered a conversation with Mayor Boda last month, I have not heard from that office. I am going to ask mayor for this. We have a lot of citizen advisory committees in this city, we have a parks committee I've sat on, we've had recycling or sustainability committees and so on. If it is possible, I would highly recommend a citizens advisory committee on group living, zoning, sober living, something like that, with stakeholders involved, so that we can actually make some progress on this. I'm getting quite disheartened to come up here every two weeks and speak into the void, and I feel like literally nothing's happening, and nothing is going to happen. And I will add this, while we are trying to avoid litigation from recovery homes against Salisbury, I bring this article to you to remind you that the citizens are suing governments in the other direction, and I'm getting very close to making some kind of community organization event or effort to gather the concerned citizens in the, in the city to consider a lawsuit of our own. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Drew?
Matt Drew, I live at three oh one North Clermont here in Salisbury. I just wanted to take a moment and thank you for your, your leadership on behalf of our community, making the first step of the unanimous approval of two-eight-five-five this evening for the Bike Ways grant, I think is a step in the right direction. As I mentioned to you at our, at our work session, we've been working on bike lanes in the city since about two thousand and twelve. We've, we've definitely been at the crawl stage for quite a long time. There's definitely been some things that we've done well, and things we've learned some from and we're going to do differently. And I think we're now mature enough as a community to take this money and be good stewards of this money, and turn this into meaningful improvements for our community. So I just wanted to thank you for your support of this ordinance this evening.
Thank you. Lynn Bratton?
Lynn Bratton, South Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland. One of the first things that I mentioned the other night when we were in the work session was to try and get reports from the sessions that are attended by the members of the city council, so that the public can get a synopsis of what those boards, commissions, and committees are doing. And I hope that you will move forward with that. I didn't hear anything tonight, but I hope that that will be on future agendas, because I think it, it opens transparency to those meetings, boards, and commissions, as well as it builds a relationship with our city council members with the public, saying that things are being done as we would think they should be done, and, and open the dialogue if they aren't. Couple meetings ago, there were several members of our community who addressed the homeless situation during very cold weather, and one of the tragedies that occurred during those times. And there were questions from those individuals about what was going on. And in the same vein, I think, I know that at the end of the meetings, questions are held, and responses are not given by council members, and that's a standard that's held for years. But I do think after several weeks of time to try and reflect on those questions, that some sort of report should come back to the public about what was discovered, what was learned, what our procedures and policies are, possibly how many people are really in the Ann Street Village, what are the employees that have been hired by our city as homeless coordinators, what really are they doing? And on an extremely frigid week of concern, were they actually pursuing their duties with due diligence and offering those individuals respite, warmth, care, concern? Or did they go home when everybody else in the city went home to their warm homes and figured they had done their job because the work was over? Another area I'd like to address is the Horizon program. It is up for review. As a taxpaying individual in Salisbury, I do feel that the infrastructures that are being built should be carrying their weight in providing revenue for fire, police, streets, maintenance, upkeep, all the things that those new buildings are requiring to be habitable, to be part of our city, and to help carry their weight. So thank you very much for those, this time, and I hope to see some responses in the next city council meetings concerning those boards, commissions, and committees. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move forward with, in the administration and council comments.
Sure, thank you. Just one thing real quick. Mr. Dean spoke about a group living committee and/or task force. If that is something that this council is interested in entertaining, I think that could be a useful use of time in gathering some people together to talk about that. So, Mr. President, I will follow back up with you after I talk with the mayor more so, but I think that that is beneficial, and there's a lot of people who could probably benefit from being part of that discussion, but then also give us some good direction in that whole area. Secondly, as I mentioned, we will continue to work on giving up updates. So if I can, Lynn, if we can chat for a second right afterwards, I just want to make sure I know exactly what your questions are, and then we'll start working on some administrative updates on some of those outstanding items. Looking forward to adding that to kind of the meeting rhythm. The last thing I'll do is, we had a big structural fire over the weekend, and if anybody was on kind of the west side of town, everybody nanacoke, great response time from our team, and thank you to the county agencies for helping cover that. It's unfortunate when those things happen, but luckily no lives were lost, and we did our job. So really excited for a great team effort, not only in the city, but also the surrounding town. And on that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Yeah, just a couple items. I wanted to touch on, the Horizon program popped up a couple of times tonight, and actually we did, this week or last week, I did a little bit of analysis on assessments that had come online, ones that are coming online, and the impact, although I think that the Horizon could afford some modifications, I think it's a good idea to incent people to push into the urban core around downtown. I think we can do that in a, in a, in a productive way. I think that the current program is, is too long in its repayment. So I think we could tweak it to keep the incentive going downtown. But at the end of the day, the analysis is, the, under the current, there's only been one project that's fallen, that's been able to allow it, that's the Ross. And it's only had like a four and a half percent increase in the amount of new assessments coming on, on board. So we've had, out of a hundred and fifty-odd million, it's something, it's in that order in the last eighteen months or whatever the number is. So I'll get you some more data on that, Lynn, or Bob. Second is, I want to update everyone on the apology resolution. There was some talk last week in the media where we were, the council and the mayor were back and forth on the topic, and I've pushed it over to the truth committee, they have a meeting on the twenty-first, gotten positive results so far from the people I've spoken to, and we're hoping to have that back on and have that read or accepted to be read in the first reading on the twenty-seventh, I think, something like that. So, which was the original concept to begin with, let it run through the truth committee and let it come back to us. So I think we're coming to a close on that subject, so I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gregory?
I'm going to keep this brief, because Nick is giving me an earful. I just hope that everybody is making sure that they're staying safe, COVID is still around. I am over it, fortunately, but, you know, we, we really need to be very careful. It is, it is running rampant, we do not want the hospitals to be overwhelmed. So if you haven't gotten your latest booster, please go get it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory, and glad to hear that you are in better spirits. Councilwoman DeShiel?
Lynn Bratton, I attended my first this afternoon, the Wycomico County Airport Commission, and I am reporting to you, to the whole group. I'm not sure if people are aware or not, but the Salisbury-Wycomico Airport is establishing a maintenance tech school and to train airline mechanics, and it will be a pipeline of talent to fill the jobs and deal with the, you know, the airplanes, you know, that need work. And the target for starting this is hopefully the fall of this year. And it should be when you go out there, it was really eye-opening for me, because, you know, if you fly out of the airport, you fly out, you fly back in, so what? But as I think it was Wayne Strasberg stated, that what we need to do, there are planes flying over us all the time, and we need to have a reason to pull them down. And the maintenance piece hopefully will do that and help grow. The other thing that I was privileged to attend last week was the Rotary luncheon, where they honor their Rotary heroes. And there were two this year at the luncheon, and one was a Mr. Bill Seuss, and because of the response down in Worcester County, he fell, he became disoriented, he fell in a creek, and a neighbor who wasn't even supposed to be there was there. He jumped in, held his, you know, body above water for as long as it took the EMTs to get there, and the two of them were sitting there. It was extremely emotional for everybody sitting in the audience. And the other one was close to my heart, because it was a homeless man, and his name, Alfred Jones, happened, just happened to be, and without bringing religion into it, I think God puts us in places that we need to be at any given time. And Mr. Jones happened to be in the city park when a seven-year-old went in the water. And he just jumped in. He said, "I didn't give it a second thought." And what was really even more interesting is those of you that are not familiar, and I'm taking too long, I apologize. Leslie and her husband have borders, have the shower trailer that goes around the city, and Mr. John's got a thousand-dollar check to give to any nonprofit, any, you know, charity that he wanted to, and he gave it to them, because they supply showers and, you know, clothing and towels for everybody in the city. So those are my two events, eye-opening, and I'm happy to report.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeShiel, for, for that report. Council Vice President Blake?
Hello, good evening. Just a couple of things. One, please stop for buses, especially when they're stopping to pick up students. Right there on Mount Herman and Long, there is the old Board of Education building, the birth of five building now, there are several buses that stop there and, and drop students off, and cars are just going to by the buses. That's just really not cool, just please, please, please stop for the buses. Another thing is, I did want to give a shout out to our fire departments for their response with the laundromat situation over on Pemberton. It looked extremely intense, and I'm just so glad that no one was really hurt, and everybody was safe, but wow, that was a, a big event. I do, I already had written down in my, my notes to give back the Human Rights Committee, which I've attended frequently over the last two years, but their board members have not attended frequently. However, in the last two months, it's kind of regrouped, and the board members are now coming, coming together, they're meeting, and the only thing they're doing right now is addressing bylaws and how the group should function. So that's, it's kind of like starting at baseline. And I did meet with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee last month. Yeah, in December. Oh, I guess, yeah, because you guys meet every, every third Thursday, or? Yeah, that's when all the, my other committees meet too, is every third Thursday. But anyway, and just really enjoying listening to the Bike Committee. I know we've talked a lot about what's going on with the bike lanes and stuff even tonight, with some of the budgeting things, talking about the Rails and Trails projects, and really starting to think about getting some bike information and cycling education out to the community. So those are the, the larger themes. And the only other thing I have to say, which I always do, is if you are healthy enough, please, please donate blood, plasma, you could donate tissue, be an organ donor, you just never know. Especially here on the eastern shore, we're very critical for blood, so make that appointment. It's right on Mount Herman Road. The blood bank, the blood, the blood bank is right on Mount Herman Road.
Thank you, Councilwoman Blake. Councilwoman Jackson?
I want to speak, well, I'm going to say this to Ms. Lynn. I'm used to bringing my computer case, and I left it home, but I do have a report for you for Parks and Rec, okay? So when we come back next week, I'll have, I'll have it for you. But we so fluently, you know, we speak about, or speak in reference to Harriet Tubman and Frederick Douglass, but we never recognize some of the great leaders that we have, African-American leaders that we have here. I went online to look up some things, and I could not find a lot of information. If it had not been for my father giving me a lot of information, I would have never known it. So I want to start with James Leonard. You see, the Leonard Apartments on the corner of Booth. He was the one who initiated that in nineteen eighty-eight, is for domestic farmworkers only. He was very instrumental in having those apartments. I mean, he was my godfather, and I can remember him being so adamant about having housing for domestic farmworkers. And it came to fruition, and now they were named in his honor, James E. Leonard Senior Apartments, which he also, and he was a civil rights, he was for civil rights, and owned a store at six seventeen Lake Street. I want to go into Mr. Philip DeShields, the first African-American man on the eastern shore or in Salisbury that I knew as being the president of the Wycomico County NDBA CP. Then there's Reverend J.C. Mills, former pastor of First Baptist Church, civil rights leader, advocate for the African-American community, worked very hard in our community. And when I say very hard, very hard, and was an excellent pastor. Emerson Holloway, first African-American to serve on the Wycomico County Council, has a park named in his honor as well. He was a school teacher, and that park is in the Indian Village area. We have Ms. Gertrude Shockley, first African-American female to serve on Salisbury City Council. Her tenure wasn't long because of some illnesses, but she did serve. Now, now to go to the riot in the city of Salisbury in May eighteenth, nineteen sixty-eight, after a Salisbury city police shot and killed a deaf man. It was triggered, and it triggered for three days of unrest with burning and looting. I can remember it, I was there, because everything that really happened in our community, Lake Street was the mainstream. So I'm a young girl, I'm ten years old, and I'm seeing rocks, bricks, I'm just seeing the, the fire department, the police department, anybody came in there that was not of color. I saw cinder blocks, bricks, I've actually seen a fireman get knocked off of the fire truck as a young girl. My father was down on one end of Lake Street trying to stop everybody from coming down the street, that wasn't of color, so they wouldn't get hurt, but they didn't listen, and they kept proceeding. Also like to talk, speak about Professor Chipman and Jeanette Chipman, they were members of the same church that I went to. We started right over here where the Chipman Cultural Center is. Professor Chipman was, how can I even describe him? He was an epitome of greatness, he was an intelligent man, very religious, and he didn't play. I can tell you, he did not play the radio with you, so if you were to come in contact with him and doing something you had no business, he would let you know. But he was, his history is very, very rich, and these are the people that we should be talking about every single day. These are people that our young kids do not know about, and this is our history here. And like I said, when I went on Long, I could not find anything. Now, to speak of my father, who sued the city for redistricting, but he won, because we had no form, a way to get in this political arena, not one. we had no form, a way to get in this political arena, not one. We couldn't win, whether we, whatever we did, we couldn't, we just couldn't get in. He was a youth advisor, he was a civil rights leader, he believed in political and inequalities for people. He wanted everybody to have the same thing. He loved children, believe me, he loved children. I had more sisters and brothers than I ever wanted. But I loved to see my father work, I loved to see when he did do his work. Because when he did do his work, and when other people were involved, and I saw him do so much for other people, it made me feel good, that I could have a father that could do for others. And I was never jealous, none of my family were ever jealous of anything he ever did for anybody's children. We were just glad because it took the pressure off of us. Downtown Salisbury, Lake Street, was a thriving, when I say a thriving entity of Black and Jew businesses, that it was. We had the Blue Moon, we had the Ritz Theater, which was Black-owned, we had the Willow Cab, we had Ally Cab, we had Blue Tangle, Mr. Curly's, and listen to these, Lock and Load. We even had on Lake Street Big Hearty Charlie. And not only did Lake Street, the Black History start just on the Lake Street, West Main Street, it went all the way up Lake Street. People owned businesses all the way up to Lake Street to where now is where Johnson Pond Homes are. Those were businesses, and they were owned by predominantly African American people. Chisen's Barbershop, we had Valley Cleaners, we had multitask of all kinds of businesses there, and they were gone, now they're gone. Now, I do want to say this, we have some African American women in leadership roles, and were in leadership roles. One of them is sitting right here, Levon Zella Ziggers, Rachel Pope, Janie Shields, and Ms. Pinkett. Ms. Pinkett was a schoolteacher as well. But these ladies, including myself, represented city council district number one, and represented it well. The first female on Wycomico County Council was Sharice Apple Hughes, and the first to represent 37A, representing Dorchester and Wycomico County, and became Speaker pro temp, this was her. And like I said, these are the people that we need to have history about. I'm working on some things as far as history, myself and some other people, and I know it's going to be done, because I can see it, it's a vision, not a dream, it's a dream, and then it became a vision, and it's going to happen. The last person that I will be speaking about tonight, because I will be coming back for more until this Black History is over, Rudy L. Kane, Rudy C. Kane Senior, who was just finalized two weeks ago. First African American to represent 37A, first African American man to sit on the Wycomico County Council. He sat on, I think, the Wycomico County Council for like 15 years, then he went to do another, I think 15 years, with the delegates, with the House of Delegates. So, my thing is, this is rich history, very rich history, but if you go online and try to pull any of it up, you cannot find it anywhere. So, it's up to us to keep our Black History, because it's not being put on Google and any other site, so we need to be the site that represents our Black History. I am glad to be sitting here this evening as city council representative. I will do my four years, and maybe I'll come back, and maybe I won't, but I'm just so proud to be here today, representing the city of Salisbury and Black History. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. And I'm glad that we have you as, especially, you furthering your father's legacy, but I'm glad that I instantly thought of you to give a little, you know, history on Black History in our community, because I get that every week visiting my grandparents, but a lot of youth and people in the community don't understand the rich history that we have in Salisbury and Wycomico County here, and then we're furthering that. And that's why I work so hard, because I don't want the work of our ancestors and my ancestors to be in vain. So, that's what continues my push forward. I'm glad Ms. Bratton spoke to it, but while we haven't formally done it, that's something that we're going to put in our rules of order, is to make sure that council, no, we love you, Ms. Bratton.
Yeah.
We're making sure that we're going to put in our rules of order to have council report out on their committees that they're a part of. So, while we haven't said anything, it's been forefront on our minds, and it seems like we've all given the reports. So, I go to the planning and zoning every month, and this Thursday is actually the one for February, but last, the big topic from January is that there's going to be a Dollar General, is going to happen, is going to be put on Milford Street near where Skate Land blessed. Martial martial arts, I'm not, martial martial arts. So, that's going to be put there. That was the big thing from last month.
Yes, go ahead, sure.
One thing that I think to the council as well as to the public, if your children are in the public school system, you might want to help push what Councilwoman Jackson was just saying. And I think if the teachers are made aware of this, when I taught Black History Month, I only knew a couple local to include, but I think with all the work you've done, it would be beneficial to share that with the Wycomico County Board of Ed.
And a lot of it, I wouldn't even have known. If my father had not, I'm telling you, my father kept me on the history, and I have a little Black book that I need to find you, because it has a lot of history, a lot of history.
That's definitely a good note, and that's why I, you know, for hearing my grandfather speak every weekend, that's why, you know, for my full-time job, and we have a project on that set of town, and I'm making sure that we put a little bit of nugget of Black History in, at least if not the naming, but some history and some historic references to where that building was and what, you know, that was the Black Wall Street of Salisbury in that very neighborhood. So, I'm making sure that we, it's my duty to make sure that folks know about that. My last week, last Tuesday, I volunteered at Junior Achievement, the Leadership Academy. That was amazing, watching and spending time with 10th, 11th, and 12th graders in the community. It was, I mean, it was a pleasure to be a small part of that. That was a really good program. Thursday, I went to the Business After Hours at Warwick Community College and spent some time at the Garry Technic Technology Center, and I had a blast there. I now can formally operate a forklift and a front loader, so if, tell our field ops team.
You're late.
So, that was fun, no, but it's a really good program, and very interactive for our children and for our working people who want to go straight into the workforce to get a real-life instance of what the jobs we have right here on the eastern shore. So, that was amazing to do. Also, if you all have, if anyone has free time, the Junior Achievement Center needs volunteers for students who are at Salisbury Middle School and Wycomico Middle School for tomorrow, the 14th and the 15th, from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. They need volunteers to help out with their biz town. So, you know, you can go on the Junior Achievement website and click the link to volunteer there, but they are in desperate need of volunteers. I am unable to go myself, but if anyone knows anyone, anyone who's retired who needs something to do, please go out there and spend some time with those babies. And, you know, Councilwoman Jackson said it all with Black History Month, but it is up to us. We have the rest of the month to continue to celebrate that. But that is all I have for this evening. So, with that, this meeting is now adjourned.